I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is a statement on my nation, on my God, and on the difficult, liberty, justice,
Staff, if you would, go ahead and call the roll call.
Frederick McCallum?
Here.
Edward Conoli?
Here.
Michelle Bruce?
Here.
Judith Wiggum?
Here.
Renee James?
Here.
Marrie Davis?
Here.
Brian Fulton?
Present.
Kimberly Jackson? Arthur Hamilton? Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Good afternoon. Jeff Gaggen playing his own administrator. We have no additions or deletions to tonight's agenda.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I'll probably be the state since I wasn't here last month, but...
I would like to comment. I read the minutes. I wasn't here last month.
Pardon me. One second. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Sure.
Are we recording?
Yes, we're recording. Just got to get my spot closer to the mic.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'm confused to see it over here. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Davis.
Sure. I wasn't able to attend last month, but I did read the minutes, and I still don't know what happened last month. I noted that there were, regarding the approval of the minutes last month, there were suggested edits, but it didn't really say what they were. And then further down, reviewed, and there were some reviewed and presented changes made to the land development regulations via PowerPoint, discuss previous questions from the public and the board. And then there were, there were comments on the following topics. This is the bottom of page one. Site approval, site plan approval, et cetera, et cetera. But it doesn't really say what the comments were. Were they approved? Were they, did people express concern about them? And then the next line says, Ms. McKinney and whatever that lady's name is, provided the answers, but it never says what the answers are. And then when we go over to general discussion, Mr. McCoy provided a status report on his letter to the city manager on televising the P&amp;Z meeting, but it doesn't say what it was. And the one thing that sort of concerns me is that in the next paragraph, there were items, commented on items in his memo, which included neighboring municipalities, da-da-da, and most do not televise the P&amp;Z meetings. That's not what concerns me. What concerns me is the last sentence there. He also commented on internal procedures and the importance of the board providing a unified image to the developers. Why is that so important? I mean, we're here to represent the city, and we're here to represent the residents. Why do we, why are we fearful about developers?
Yeah. I get for the record, Jeff Gaggen playing his own administrator. I guess what we're trying to go away from were verbatim minutes. So previously, we were almost writing down word-for-word what was said. It became very burdensome, so we kind of came to consensus that we do a really rough skeleton outline of the meeting minutes, and then we'd have the meeting recording available online. So if there were certain sections that you wanted to really listen to in depth, that way it would be accessible to everybody, but it also wouldn't be, I guess, extremely burdensome for staff in order to fill out a verbatim meeting minutes. And I think that, for the example that you mentioned as far as providing a unified image to the developer, that was, the comment was based off of specific instances that occurred during that meeting. Potentially listening to the recording would, I guess, allow you to get a better feeling, but again, it's just, it's supposed to be more of a skeleton structure for the meeting minutes than we're having them available online.
Well, I agree that they should not be verbatim, but, and you could certainly summarize them, and I think that it is, it makes it onerous if we're representing the community. It makes it onerous to say, all right, you, it's your responsibility, not yours, but the community, to find the answers to the questions. It's their responsibility to go and look for these, this information regarding our meeting. We represent them, and we're all volunteers. And I still don't know what, what it says. And I'm really opposed to this.
Chair.
Mr. James.
Can I suggest that maybe we put some type of clause or disclaimer in the meeting minutes to hear word-for-word, just include where they're located online for future reference? Right? And then also state that the minutes are a summary. They're not, like, verbatim. So just something that's added in the minutes to state that it's, it's a summary, the, if you want to listen to the entire meeting, you know, go to the website and include that information. Just a suggestion.
Okay. I think it's been noted by staff, and a disclaimer at the bottom of it, I don't see that, that's too much trouble. What do you think, Jeff?
That's something that we can easily do.
Okay. Certainly. And I think, at least, and, excuse me for interrupting, I think, you know, it makes for it better to put online, because I remember one of these meetings, we had the minutes were just entirely alone. I mean, to have staff to actually transcribe these minutes word-for-word in the details, I think it makes for a better understanding if you actually go back and listen to the recording. It really does, because when you have the minutes in front of you, and you can hear the recording, you can kind of make sense of what's going on in case you were out, but it, it, it makes for a better understanding of what went on during those meetings. And I'm not going to delay unless there's any other comments. I got a motion by Mr. Colton on the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Colton, second by Ms. Brooks. Staff, if you will call the roll for approval of the minutes.
Brian Fulton?
Yes.
Marrie Davis?
No.
Renee James?
Yes.
Judith Wiggum?
Here.
Michelle Bruce?
Yes.
Edward Conoli?
Yes.
Frederick McCallum?
Yes.
May it approve with these, thank you.
Unfinished business? New business?
Yes, for new business tonight, we have one item. It would help if I started my presentation on the right page. Under new business tonight, we have a application for plat approval. The plat's known as Rapid South Plat. Mr. Timothy Hanlon is here representing the property owners. It is for two parcels. Total acreage is 6.74 acres, and is located south of the Rapids Water Park on the east side of North Military Trail. This is a Google Earth view. The parcels that are shown in color here are the two that are for consideration of this plat, just to give you a better understanding and locate additional landmarks. This is the Rapids Water Park. This is the Lumbine Golf Course and Residential Development. I believe this is, let's see, this is Port West Boulevard, and then Up Grove Lane is on the bottom of the screen. The next area, this is from the property appraiser website, and it more clearly shows delineation of the boundaries of the property. This is the southernmost parcel, and then the northernmost parcel here, which are both under consideration for this plat application. And again, the colored area, the green and blue colored area, shows the area that under for, that's up for consideration. This is a street view from North Military Trail. This is looking north. This is really showing the southern parcel. And this is looking south of North Military Trail, showing the northern parcel. And then, in the background, it's up to discern, but this is the same building that is shown on this previous slide. So it kind of gives you a better understanding of the current status of the parcels. So everyone should have an 11-by-17 copy of the plat that was handed out tonight, as well as in their digital packet that was sent out previously. The plat itself is, it's much more technical. However, being the planning zoning board, you're tasked to review all development applications, as well as any sort of plat approvals as well. Additionally, in your packet, I've included, it's a really brief staff report, in comparison to some of the special exception projects that have come along previously. It's much, much more truncated, being that a lot of the information that is typically provided in the staff report really pertains to the development of the parcels versus just the planning of them. Additionally, Mr. Hanlon is here tonight to answer any questions. I believe he might want to just give a really brief presentation, but staff is recommending approval, and that the planning is only board makes a motion in support of the city council approving the Rapid South Plat. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Hanlon.
Thank you, Jeff. Sorry about that. Thank you, Jeff. For the record, I'm Timothy Hanlon, here for the applicant. I think Jeff made a good summary, a very good presentation. It's a very simple application. Two properties owned here that we're trying to plat, for the main reason that they are unplatted properties, and very little can be done with these properties, either by conveyance or development, without planning them. Based on potential plans of the new owner, they need to plat them to be able to develop them in the future. So we're here before you tonight, and I remain available to answer any questions. That concludes my presentation. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Howland, if you want to stay right up there and make some questions, I have one. Was this just acquired by clients?
Lot three was part of the Rapids Water Park, and that is owned by the new owner. Lots one and two are owned by a family limited partnership, owned by one of the former owners. And it is the intention, I believe, or there are discussions, that the new owner will also acquire lots one and two, and that cannot be accomplished without this platting process. So that's one of the major reasons, that is the major reason we're here before you tonight.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
Where the building is, where the little building is, I don't know, these aren't numbered, but I guess it's on Military Trail. What was there before? Was that a big truck stop or something?
Not a truck stop, it was a rental, equipment rental.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Scott Smith, Williams and E.
I remember now. Thank you.
Chair.
Mr. Colton?
One question. It says, in our description, future development, our future development proposal, do you have or is there an idea now what the future development of those, that plot will be once we give approval, or if we do give approval tonight?
No, there is no current plan for that, but the applicant would have to bring that back to the city before anything could be done there. But it is intended to be a part of the Rapids Water Park.
Any other comments from the board? For, or any other questions for Mr. Howland?
I have one question. The property appraisal records show that the A, or the CLP Rapids Water Park owns those two properties, and that they did change hands in June 12.
I think they're mistaken.
Is that right?
Yes. I did that transaction, and so I'm pretty confident.
Okay, so you're saying the property appraisal records are wrong?
Correct. That does happen on a big transaction sometimes. I've noticed that happen, I've had it a few times, when a large parcel is transferred. But in the end, I think in the end of the day, once this plat is approved, if it is approved, of course, that is a tension. I think that will be the end result, that the, that the new buyer will own all three lots.
Okay. And these are contiguous to the property to the south, to the north?
Correct.
Which is owned by the water?
The new purchaser.
Right.
Correct.
No other question? Mr. Howland, is that a retention fund just to the, I guess, the east of it?
That, that is part of the Department of Transportation. Yes. It's owned by the Florida DOT.
Chair.
Just a minute, Ms. James. So did DOT own that in turn?
They owned basically two parcels, and they conveyed the front parcel to the former owner of the Rapids before the entire property was transferred to the new buyer.
Okay. Ms. James?
I have an issue with the statement that the property appraisers' website is wrong, because if that's wrong in going into this, then those records need to be corrected before you should be trying to move forward.
Well, I understand and appreciate your question, but both owners are joining in this plat. So even if the property appraisers' office records were correct, you still had that owner joining in this plat, and that's why we had both owners join in this plat and join in the dedication. So I think whichever way the records are true or untrue, that the property has been transferred, then you have the CLP entity that's entering into this plat. If it hasn't been transferred, then you have the AKP MLP family limited partnership entering the plat. So I think it's an abundance of caution, we had both parties join in. And I stand before you as an officer of the court, saying, I represented the seller in this transaction, there was title insurance, and those parcels were not intended to be conveyed. I don't believe they were conveyed, but we're here before you to make sure they are conveyed. So once the plat is approved, if it is approved, we will then report a deed, and the records will be 100% correct.
When do you plan on doing that?
Well, we, if you do approve it, the current planning is owning, we'll have to go before city council, and then the conveyance will take place very shortly thereafter.
Okay, because if you're saying that if it was purchased June 2012, then that would have had to be on the tax roll. Recertify the tax roll. The property appraisers certify the tax roll for Palm Beach County mid-October.
Right.
So that should have been updated. So you're standing before us tonight, telling us those records are wrong?
Well, I actually wasn't aware that it was, I will...
Sorry, just if I may, um, just historically, I have sometimes seen the records on the website not be updated as quickly...
Not from June 2012, not for property appraiser. Now, if you said tax collector, because I work there, I would say yes, because we only get that certification once a year, and we cannot update until we get the certified tax roll.
What, what staff can do to make sure that everything is in order is follow up with the property appraiser, and then if documents weren't recorded correctly, if the information needs to be updated, we can ensure that the information is provided to the property appraiser's website prior to the, going to city council. Now, that's not to say that we can control how they update the website, but we can at least put something in writing to them to make sure that everything is...
Yeah, the applicant can definitely, that's the process to get it changed.
May I make...
The applicant can submit a written request to the property appraisers' office. Even if you want it changed before October to the tax collectors, all the property appraiser has to do is certify us that information in a memo, and we can update our records as well. But just to say, you know, we have something in front of us, and, you know, you're attesting that the information is not correct.
May I make a suggestion, because I think you raise a good point? If you would accept this, make the approval conditional upon my, once I get back in the office tomorrow and next week, follow up with the property appraisers' office and make sure that the records are correct before I go to city council. I'm willing to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm curious, is the conditional approval even necessary?
I...
Because it doesn't seem that it's necessary, at least in my opinion. I'm not a land use attorney.
Both owners are joining the plat, so I think it's covered.
And that's what I'm thinking. Another question is, is dated? I mean, I heard you say June, but the application has February.
Correct.
So you start this application for plat in February.
Correct.
Probably changing it to June 12.
The closing for the Rapids Water Park took place last June.
Oh, last?
2012. Hey, that's a confusion, right?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
The parties commenced discussions about these additional lots, and that led us to the platting process, because they can't be conveyed or developed without the plat, because they're both unplatted parcels.
Okay. I certainly understand. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion if we approve the project as submitted.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Ms. Brooks. Any other comments or concerns? Before we go to roll call, did you have something, Mr. Colton? Oh, staff, what's the timeline on this? When do you, I mean, when do you guys imagine it'll go before council?
Well, as you're aware, we have council meetings once a month. Sorry. Proud to talk to you seriously. It's been a long day, sorry. Council meetings once a month. It's the first Wednesday of every month. What comic relief for everyone. As soon as documents are prepared, and staff feels comfortable sending it, and there's room in the agenda, which is up to the council chairperson, of course, then it will go. So I would anticipate, if not next month, the following month, for sure.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or concerns? Is there a motion made by Ms. Davis, second by Ms. Brooks? If you will call roll?
Brian Colton?
Yes.
Marrie Davis?
Yes.
Renee James?
No.
Judith Wiggum? Michelle Bruce?
Yes.
Edward Conoli?
Yes.
Frederick McCallum?
Yes.
Question passes three to... Is there a... Ms. James?
Point of order, slide to two. Motion passes?
Five to two.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
During discussion, is there any public comments? Do you think we need, you can go to correspondence.
We have a representative from the waterfront advisory board, has thought it'd be, just asked him to introduce himself, he's the new chairperson. I'm sorry.
Keith Corway. Hi, I'm Keith Corway of the waterfront advisory board, and the new chairman. I just came to see how it's done. You're my role model.
Whoa.
Wish there were more people here, though, but it seems to kind of waste all this talent up on front, and nobody here could witness it, but I'm here to see what the procedures and how you handle your board, because I'm new to this.
Whoa, whoa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colton.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Does that follow by, do you mind, you're going to need it?
No. Just good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Jeff, you have any correspondence?
We have no correspondence.
Okay. Any more comments?
Want to go back to the minutes, please?
Acknowledge Ms. Davis.
I think that we're always trying to enhance transparency, and I, I think that this is onerous, this new plan is onerous to the public. And I don't think it's a good idea, and it doesn't enhance transparency, and I don't think it's going to make the community feel that they have to now go listen or look. Some of those people, some of our community, they don't have computers. They're not as literate with the computer as others, and I think that we are bypassing them. And I think that there's, I think that we need to have a summary of these subjects, and the, that's what's lacking. As much as we talk about transparency, this is the opposite. And those are my feelings.
Any other comments?
Chair.
Mr. Hanlon?
I know this is not necessarily required...
If you will speak up, I don't think that microphone is on.
Thank you. Just for the record, just want to inform staff that this way, I have a scheduling conflict for next meeting. I may or may not be here, but just wanted to make sure...
Mr. Hamilton, excuse me. Could you make sure you speak up?
Thank you.
Can you hear him?
Well, I, I certainly heard him, but there's a problem with the recordings if you don't speak up loud enough, so I want to make sure that, you know, we can have these type recordings archived, and, you know, we can kind of make sure we, we hear you.
Okay. Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
I have a scheduling conflict for next meeting. I may or may not be here. Just wanted staff to be aware.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Any other comments? No comments of project updates?
I don't have any specific projects' updates for tonight. However, I did want to, I guess, tell the board that the hierarchy that was asked for, I believe, a meeting or maybe two ago, has been provided tonight. The intent wasn't for it to be exhaustive by any means, but just to give an overview, kind of starting from the top down. And the, the blue boxes are, I guess, typical elements that are found within any sort of plan approval or review, and then depending on a specific project, either one or both of the red boxes may come into effect.
What, what it to, but definitely not both, right?
Well, potentially over the life of the project, depending on what it is, let's say it was a larger residential development, there is potential for that to require school concurrency through Palm Beach County, traffic concurrency through Palm Beach County, as well as having the option, if they had, an HOA board or other types of rules or covenants that govern how the residential development operates outside the scope of the city.
Okay. All right. Mr. Colton, you have one question. Go ahead. With regards, and in the red, where it says the homeowners' association, at what point does the homeowners or property owners' association condo slash get involved with this type of regulation or types of regulation that may come before report?
I guess it's really project-specific. So if it was an addition versus a brand-new development versus an extremely large-scale development on just green space, it could be implemented in different phases. So if it was a ground-up type of development where there was nothing to begin with, you know, there would have to be either an ad hoc type committee or a legal document basically providing them with those powers in order to operate if it was a residential development. If it was, let's say, an addition to a home, that's something that the property owner would be impacted by, however, that's, the city's rules and regulations wouldn't change necessarily due to that, however, we would want to work with the HOA or POA in order to make sure that, you know, their rules and guidelines are followed by the applicant as well. So I think it would require a, an art approval letter or some type of documentation if we are aware that there is an HOA or POA.
Just to follow up, you mentioned an ad hoc committee. Doesn't a ad hoc committee happens after development starts, and basically you have owners for that property? How could that hot, ad hoc community give input on what's developed in that community or for future, if there's any changes may occur or not? How could that happen?
That may be a poor example, because lots of times they don't have the actual legal backing in order to enforce rules and regulations, guidelines. Legally, they may not, however... Legally, they may not, however, the city would want to work with them and the development in order to incorporate, you know, what their design principles and guidelines were for any type of new development. So it, it may come to a point where legally, potentially in addition, wouldn't be able to be stopped if they don't have legal precedents in order to do so.
Is there any other comments?
Move to a juror?
Second. It's the shortest meeting yet.